It is September 29th, we're meeting by Zoom. Eric, would you say the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to add three things to the agenda today, actually two things. We need to talk about a certificate with the KAC voting delegate, maybe to sign a delegate and an alternate. I guess they're having their meeting on Zoom. Add some EMS spending for the CARES Act discussion in action. If there's no objection, I'd like to add those to the agenda. Okay, public comment. This is a, where people can speak, citizens can speak on any non-agenda item. We ask them to keep it to three minutes. Does anybody want to speak? Okay, nobody wants to speak. We'll move along, Wes Lander, you're up.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, how are you doing? Today, I'm here to present the Spark Grant Committee proposed awarding for the grants. On these grants, we did have one point, sorry, 1.9 million requested, of which we have $725,000 to give out. I'm just going to share on screen real fast so you can see the spreadsheet. The committee met multiple, multiple times over the last two weeks, almost three weeks. That committee again was consisted of nine people, nine residents from Atchison County, Jack Bauer County Commissioner, Mark Wilson, Atchison County Project Manager, myself, Atchison County Emergency Manager, Mark Windsor with Exchange National Bank, Jeff Cottle with Union State Bank, Angie Hughes from Farm Bureau, Angie Hughes Farm Bureau Financial, Brian Hanke with Exchange Bank of Eppingham, Sharon Swartz, a Muskota resident and works for the Crane Museum, and then, of course, Pat Henderson, our county counselor. I will share this now. After all the meetings, we went through and came up with, what the spreadsheet do you see before you? This is a much condensed spreadsheet, so it's easier for everyone to view. We put the request into three different buckets, as we were instructed to do so from the state with all of our conference calls. The first bucket, which would be paid, would be COVID expenses. The second bucket that would be paid would be lost profit or lost revenue. And the third bucket would be the development, the economic development, would be improving your business or expanding your business. Unfortunately, we did not have enough money to make it into the economic development bucket. We were only able to fund the COVID expense and the lost revenue, lost profit, trying to make our businesses whole again. So we went through these and we measured the revenue that they lost along with what they requested. And then we also grouped them into alike businesses. So, for example, we'll look at the dental. Dental, we have three different dental practices that requested money in our, in our community. We didn't feel it would be fair if we didn't allot them a similar dollar amount. So, as you can see, for example, Sunbeam Dental, they requested $50,000, but we reduced them to $20,000 to match the other dental practices that were in town. Same with the dining. If you look at restaurants, you can see how they requested different numbers across the board. We went through their, their applications and we requested additional information from, from a lot of these businesses, so we could dig in deeper. And so we allotted them, after looking at all their expenses, a similar award, so it'd be fair across the board. So we'll start here at the top. We are awarding $724,975. That's as close as we could get to the $725,000, which is pretty close. So you can see the, the type of businesses it is, you can see the business name, what they requested, and then what was awarded. Or what is proposed to be, that'll be a decision for the county commission. So you can see the childcare agencies. We grouped them to the 10,000 to 15,000. Sorry, the Body Shop at the very top was 10,000. Then you have your Atchison Golf Club Bellevue and Oak Lodge. We require, or you can see we awarded them there, the dental area spoke about that we awarded them. The dining restaurants, they're the numbers that were they requested and what they, what they are proposed to be awarded. Benedictine College and Moore Hill. We have decided to award the full $50,000 to both of those, because our public schools got assistance through our Sparks grant money. And so this is the only way that we could give it to Moore Hill and B.C., because they're not a public school, they're a private school. You can see only one fuel state requested and they got their full amount. Multiple, multiple contractors requested money. Not all of them responded when we requested more information to go along with their applications. And the ones that did economic development were not going to be funded, whereas that one contracting company did have COVID expenses and lost revenue, sorry. Lodging, you can see there, we grouped, or we didn't group them, but we couldn't give more than what they requested. Then you can see our nonprofits next. And you can see they range across the board and how they were awarded. Professional Services, same, you can see what they requested and what they were rewarded with, or proposed awarded with. Retail businesses, the same, it was across the board. And we tried to condense those close to be together. So here, wholesale is the same way. So you can see all these businesses here, these are ones that were requesting economic development and we did not make it into, into that gamut, that third bucket. So these are the businesses that right now are going to receive a zero award unless the commissioner would change that. Some of these businesses also, we requested information because their grants were, their applications were very lacking and we, it was hard to understand what they wanted. They did not respond in a given amount of time to the second request, and so then they got moved down to this group also. Now, we did have two ineligible businesses, one of them being Atchison County Corrections, which that's a government entity, not a nonprofit or a, or a business in our community. So that'll be handled on the, on the government side of the Sparks Grant. And then Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas, they serve all of Northeast Kansas, but they don't have a physical office here in Atchison, which is, or Atchison County, which is what is required on the grant. And we want to make sure that our money stays in Atchison County also.
Clarification, if I could for a second. Catholic charities, because it was not registered, the registered office is not in Atchison County. Correct criteria.
Correct. So they were considered ineligible along with community corrections. Do you have any questions on this spreadsheet? It was suggested by county counselor to have today for us to present this to you and then have a hearing next, next Tuesday, October 6th, at your county commission meeting for anyone to voice their concerns or opinions before the commission would adopt this proposal or make changes and then adopt that proposal. Let me just scroll up or scroll down, just let me know.
Wes, you're going to post this on the county website?
Yes, this will be posted on the county website and we'll be sending letters out to, or letters out to all the grants requests, letting them know what, what the proposed letter or the proposed amount is for them, stating that the commission will make a decision next week after a hearing.
Any questions from anybody, including the audience? Commissioners, you think he's asked to answer all our questions?
Yes, I don't pretend to know near as much as the committee that we had decided this or has been doing the research and everything, which I know it had to have been a big undertaking, because there's a lot of requests and a lot of good requests. So I'm deferring to that committee.
On top of this, I've also, I've not completely, but sending the commission all of the grants, so you can review those before next week, along with all of the additional information that we requested from certain businesses when we needed it. So, so you'll be able to have all that information to review before next week's hearing.
Wes, I might comment that eight of the nine committee members all had some kind of conflict.
Yes.
Somebody applying their, their clients, they were related. All those things, and all, every one of those people recruits themselves for any discussion in regard to people they had a relationship with.
Correct. Yes, every committee member, the least, one of them at least had some kind of conflict. They spoke up and said, well, I can't comment on this one because I'm somehow related to this, to that business, so.
Does anybody need to scroll down any further? After that, we're going to move on.
I'll make sure and email this document to you, along with posting it on the county website.
Let me, let me understand that you're going to email this to who, Wes?
To the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Along with posting it on the website. If you don't have any questions, I will let you proceed with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
We have to appoint a, a voting delegate for the KAC annual meeting, which I understand is going to be held by virtually this, we want to nominate a who wants to serve as a delegate? What a delegate.
I will probably be harvesting, I hate to make a commitment to that at this time. I didn't know, were some, were you going to, Jack, were you going to attend?
Yeah, I probably will. If you want to nominate me as the, as a voting delegate, then we can nominate one of the other commissioners as the alternate.
Okay, I'll nominate Jack Bauer as the not the first alternate, or no, it would be the delegate, I'm sorry, as the delegate to the KAC Zoom Conference.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, second to five, I say aye.
Aye.
I get, I get to be the voting delegate, so. I would nominate Eric Knoll to be the alternate delegate. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
All in favor, second to five, I say aye. Aye, pass is three, three to zero. Okay, EMS CARES Act. You want to present it, Corey?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'm in front of you today to seek approval for the expenditure of the Atchison County EMS CARES Act money that was received as part of the CARES Act stimulus package. This would be federal money awarded to us. The actual amount is $61,051.54. I've put a plan together, a three-part plan, to spend approximately a third of that money on three different proposals. The first would be payment of COVID-19 hazard pay for all employees substantially dedicated to COVID response at 50 cents per hour worked, retroactive to 3/29/2020, which would be the date of the first confirmed COVID-19 case in Atchison County through 12/31/2020. The second part of the plan would be to offset the cost of hiring one full-time EMT through the remainder of 2020, and that employee shall be retained through 2021 and beyond with the already approved budget for 2021. And the third portion of the plan would be used to offset operational shortfalls during the decrease in call volume experienced during the early onset of the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. These expenditures, again, would be approximate due to the variations in hours worked and the increase in pay that may be found in hiring an employee with more experience. So that is my plan for the expenditure of those monies that we received. And again, this is specific to EMS and not part of the Spark Grant money that Wes talked about earlier. So I would present it to the board for approval for, for expenditure.
Discussion we had this morning, Corey, we were unsure if we had the, had the number three, if we had it worded correctly.
I did change that wording.
Yeah.
I changed that from revenue shortfall to operational shortfall at Mr. Henderson's request.
Mr. Review by our county councilor.
And I did speak to the county clerk and the treasurer about the PO situation, and they were both of the opinion that this is non-budgeted and not county money, where this is federal money, that the minutes of the meeting and the commission's approval would suffice to spend this money.
So this is, that's a clerk thing we need to make, this is not county money, this is money that was
Yes, this is not coming out of county general or the EMS budget. This was the money that was awarded to us as a Medicare provider through the CARES Act stimulus payment.
So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the EMS CARE, CARE Act stimulus money for $61,051.54, put it into three, three buckets, described by Corey's time.
Also
to move by Christian Knoll, seconded by
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? During that, I assume you raise the vote. All in favor, second to five, I say aye.
Aye.
Zero. I got a lot of order at the beginning, so need to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have one correct. Mr. Chairman, I have one correction, and it was my mistake. I stated that correctional put a 3% raise in their budget for the employees, and it was project concern instead of correctional.
Thank you for clarifying. So is that a motion to approve, as amended? Bill, is that, is that it?
I'll second.
Seconded by Eric Knoll, all in favor, second to five, I say aye.
Aye.
Pass is three to zero. Okay, county counselor updates. Looks like you're out here twice, Pat.
I'm trying to get, I had a little computer issue, so can you hear me okay?
I hear you fine.
Yes. Last week, at the meeting, we had some discussion about the public comment portion of our meetings and kind of just discussing what our policies are or what they should be. Under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, there's not a requirement that you have a public comment session, but under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, if you do have one, there are some rules that you have to follow, because you are, of course, a governmental entity. And so if individuals are speaking, they are exercising their First Amendment rights. And so under First Amendment law, you can do what are known as time, place, and manner restrictions upon public speech or upon speech by individuals at your, your public hearing or public meeting, but you cannot impose any limits based upon the content of the speech. That is, whether you agree with the speech or don't agree with the speech. The courthouse, its building itself has traditionally been viewed as part of the marketplace of ideas, as a gathering place for people to, to discuss whatever the important topics of the day are. And looking at what many other municipalities have done, both in Kansas and other places, they do tend to have a public comment session on the agenda and typically someplace near the beginning of the agenda. And we certainly have that. It's, a lot of places have a suggestion of a sign-in for anybody who wants to address the board. That's not required, signing in is, is optional and the, the, the city or the county should not be prohibiting anonymous speech even, that that's something that's, that's allowed under the First Amendment. Many, well, it looks like every one of the the policies that I saw from other municipalities limited the time that each speaker would be given. And three minutes seemed to be a real sweet spot, but there were a few that were at five minutes, but almost all did, did have a restriction on the amount of time and the overwhelming majority of those seemed to be in the three-minute range. There were some policies that had an overall limit of how long would be devoted to public comments, and that was typically around 30 minutes. So that if you had a hundred people that showed up and wanted to each take three minutes up, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't be in the, the meeting for several hours while they all spoke. That's not anything we've ever had any sort of problem with here, but it might not be a bad idea to, to, to have that. There were a lot of suggestions about making sure that people understand that public comment is just that, it's an opportunity for that person to make a comment. It isn't an opportunity to engage in a debate with the board. It isn't the opportunity to engage in a debate with any particular employee. It's, it's, it's really listening, it's not necessarily a back and forth between a member of the public and anybody involved, anybody on staff. And so I would think that you might want to discuss adding a limitation on the, the total length. On the other hand, it's, it's not come up, so maybe it isn't necessary to do that. And those are really the, the highlights of it. Oh, there's one other item with regard to handouts or exhibits that are to be, to be shared, that that's certainly permissible to do, but it, the best practices recommendation is to have those exhibits go to the clerk and have the clerk share them, because by giving away the screen on a virtual meeting to somebody outside of the, of the county, there's a possibility of there being something inappropriate that's, that's shared. And so one way to, to ensure that doesn't occur is to have the clerk or somebody with the county be the one that is, that's actually sharing the exhibit. And it's also probably, as you noticed when you were trying to read that spreadsheet that was up there, it's probably more effective if people can have an individual copy of it anyway. Since I think it's a lot easier to read than trying to read something that's on the screen. So what do you think? Do we need to make any changes to our policy?
I think we've handled it pretty well, our citizens have been very fair in the way they do it. I think the time limit of the total conversation might be something to be considered, but really not add that is a problem. If we allow people to speak up to three minutes, we can extend it if, if the chair so desires. Just seems like it's pretty common sense. I don't know if we got to make a big change in our strategy, because we have had more conversations in the last six months than we've ever had in the three or four years that I've been in the commission. Public comment is pretty rare in this, so I'm glad we got some people engaged to talk to us.
I could probably see the most problems with the screen sharing, which that's with the onset of Zoom meetings. I mean, it wouldn't have happened in a in-person meeting, but while we have these meetings, I could see that giving someone intentionally or unintentionally that they hit the wrong button and show something that maybe wouldn't be appropriate. So that would be my probably biggest concern, would be the screen sharing.
Well, I'm for the, I'm for the sharing by the clerk.
I would agree.
Anything else, Pat?
Uh, no.
So does that need to be put into a document voted on for, I mean, are we going to actually have a policy or is just state policy enough?
Well, I, I think we, we need to have a policy. It's not going to be very long, but it should be placed into the form of a written policy.
Okay.
We need a public comment at the beginning and at the end, a good portion of it, I would ask.
Yeah, you know, the public comment at the the public comment at the end of the meeting has really in practice been used when people show up and say, I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting and I wanted to talk to you, and it's more or less been a courtesy or an accommodation, I guess, to, to, to that. So maybe a good idea to have it on both ends.
Anything else? Any need for an executive comment?
Yes, I'd like an executive session. Pat, would that be fairly short, wouldn't you think? 15 minutes?
Yes, probably.
Okay. I'll make them, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at 1:30 PM for consultation with an attorney for the board, Pat Henderson, county counselor, which consultation would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and that the executive session is necessary to protect the attorney-client privilege. The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom platform. The board will come out of executive session at 1:45 PM, either on the Zoom platform or in the commission room, first floor courthouse in open session. Those present will be the three commissioners and Pat Henderson, county councilor.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, second to five, I say aye. We call an executive session as soon as the room opens up. And we'll return in 15 minutes. And we'll return in 15 minutes. We're back. Okay, public comment, this is, anybody have any public comments? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 See you next week.